I'd like to call this meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please, Desiree?
Sure. Mayor Sigada?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley?
Present.
Commissioner Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Here.
All right, could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to God, and to the United States of America, and to the people of this country, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming out this evening. A couple of announcements, our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. This time, we will take committee reports from the commission. Commissioner Honeyfield, any reports?
None.
Commissioner Jacomo?
I'm doing Arthur Johnson memorial library event. It's the fiscal information for the month of May. Donation received is $370.61. Funds is $177.67. Copies made were $630.15. Morals received was $964.91. The program held in libraries, two attended by 187 persons. Story hour half held in libraries was 24. Story attendance was 26. Fiscal information for June of 2026. Donations received were zero. Funds collected $159.53. Copies made was $704.74. Morals received was $30. Programs held in libraries was 28. Attendance was 80. Story hours held in libraries was two.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Do you want me to do the water board or you?
Yeah, go ahead.
The water board met July 15th. Lake Maloya is full and stops spilling July 7th. Filter plant production in June was 31.9 million gallons with a peak flow of 1.5 million gallons a day. They are working on a water trust board application for the wastewater treatment plant along with the Lake Maloya spillway improvements. We awarded an engineering services proposal to AECOM. We approved bid proposal for continued water, continuing water meter replacement. We approved financials and the budget, which is very tight and is before the commission tonight for approval. And something else in there got erased. Anyway, we meet monthly on the third Tuesdays at 5:00 PM in the commission chambers. The North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board met June 26th, both the executive and regular boards. We looked over and approved several state contracts for the AAA. Approved the budget and some other documents. Dues have not been increased in 10 years while services have increased drastically. So 2026 dues will be higher. We will go from $1,377 to $3,500. And this is across the board for different cities. They're evening things out. The next executive committee meeting is on July 31st. And then on August 5th, we are having a meeting to do final interviews for the new executive director. Ports to Plains met on June 26th. I was unable to attend due to the North Central meeting at the same time. But our community directed spending request for I-27 alignment study in Raton was supported by each person and our federal delegation is, and is moving along in the process. Today, we were also asked, which will probably be on our next commission meeting agenda. Every five years, the federal government reauthorizes the transportation bill. And so they've asked us to do three different resolutions supporting funding formulas and designations and alignment studies for every, every state across the corridor. So New Mexico has some of those things already in place, but other states don't. So they've asked us as an alliance to, to do that for them and to show our support. So I believe we're working on those potentially for next week. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Schuster?
Okay. Now, it seems like I was busier than I was, but on the 15th, I did attend IPR and open meetings training through State Department and as well as on the 17th, it was a, I attended virtually. And Jason also did that, but he's not here tonight. I was hoping he could clarify some of this. There was a Department of Transportation meeting and I attended virtually. So the items that are pertinent to our region that I believe are pertinent to us is there's some repavement on I-25 in, from Row to Glorietta. Pavement rehab in the Las Vegas business loop as well as the Springer business loop will be repaved. Exit I-20, exit 455 on I-25, and of course, that's us. There's roadway rehab and spot construction as well as an increase in slope protection, of the slope protection wire. So I'll be putting more of that in.
I just have a comment, not that it's good, but do you have a microphone or anything? I know there's people here hard of hearing and they can't hear you.
So I will try to speak up. So the last thing I was saying is that exit 455 on I-25, which is the top of the pass, basically, they're going to be doing, they're increasing roadway rehab as well as spot construction and cleaning up some of those holes they've put in there. And they're also adding in slope wire protection to, to maintain and keep rocks from falling down. So they're still be working up there. Springer's business loop will get some repavement. Our business loop is not on the list for any current time in the future. Also, I met today with Brad Lager as well as Kristy Medina after the groundbreaking that I'm sure the mayor will talk about that. And we just, we're continuing to discuss, the educational board is continuing to discuss options and how we can improve advanced education opportunities for students in the area. Everything from the film project, film training project and other skills that people could benefit from. So we're working on some things and hopefully in the next year or so, we'll have some nice opportunities for our students to progress. That's all I have.
All righty. For myself, I had a special RPS meeting yesterday, was approved, the budget, so it could be on the agenda tonight. I also attended the North Central meetings as well. One thing that I had privy to the information of was our ADA plan is coming along and I guess it's pretty darn close to completion. And we will need a resolution coming from the board. I guess we'll get some direction from Patrick or Jayden, either one, on, on what to do there. Did attend the groundbreaking, as Commissioner Schuster said, for Resound Internet this morning. It was well attended. And then we met for lunch at the senior center where Resound donated $600 for lunches for the seniors. And they donated that to the senior center. So that was, that was awesome. I look forward to the partnership with them. Last week, I was invited to attend the cabinet in the community meeting in Silver City, mainly because we have some Sil, some senior centers down there that are undergoing a transition and there was fear that there might be some questions that the governor could not answer. So I sat through five and a half hours of that meeting. Started at 5:30 and got to my room at midnight. Almost midnight. It was fun, but it was, what was interesting was to hear Silver City has got the same problems we got. Workforce, empty buildings and everything else. And medical services, behavioral health services, everything that we're lacking, they're lacking too. So it's, you know, statewide. But also while there, I know Cynthia was down there. I ran into Ann, I didn't run into Cynthia, but Ann, and that, we were at the groundbreaking or not, the grand opening of their rec center there in Silver City. $16 million facility, really nice. Basketball courts, pickleball courts, indoor walking track. And it was named after the lieutenant governor's father, Howard Morales's father. So that was, that was good. But other than that, I don't think there was anything. I think Rick and I attended a couple of things together in the last couple of weeks, but pretty much business as usual. So without being said, we'll move on to business. Next on the agenda is items from citizens present. If you're here to address the commission, this is the time to do it. However, if it is related to something that is on the agenda, please wait till that item comes up for discussion. So at this time, we will take any comments from the public. Please state your name and
Joe Bustos, I'm from Raton, New Mexico, Colfax County. I got a question for all of you, especially Rick, because I've been coming to Rick when he first started, about what, two years ago, year and a half, whatever, complaints and all this stuff. And you still haven't done nothing but what I want done for the veterans here. See, my dad was World War II veteran here, you guys. I still have this, this, you've seen it. He's a hero, hero pattern, three Bronze Stars, seven medals. I want to get that gun we have over here at the park. I was raised around that during the times and my dad, he used to look at that. He said, I should shoot that in combat with the other fellows. And Rick said that he would try to get this done. I'm waiting, it's been about a year and a half already. You had stalled, you never called me. And then you told me that, come back, I come back and you keep putting me off. What's so hard about moving that and putting it over at the park, Veterans Park, which I was a member of Parks and Rec when Neil hired me? Thank you, Neil, for doing that because I did it for the veterans. I raised my hand to put those flags up over there. I want to fix this flag, this Legion Droid part for veterans. Come on, guys, support this. You're a veteran, I'm a veteran. How many veterans in here? Raise your hand. Thank you for serving. And Jacomo. So it's due for our veterans because I think it looked pretty there. Got the tank there, that's my tank. I should drive that in, in, in the garden. It's the duster, the one in the corner. I'm going to get that cannon, have it power washed and the grid is kind of messed up. They could take it to the warehouse, tack it, you know, like you said, it was a spot wallet. And then give you the paint, I would paint it right there in the park. Take pictures of it, put a plaque on it, tell the people the history of this cannon. It's an old gun, guys, it's not like a Hauser, I guess. You know what it is, huh? What, what size is that?
An anti-aircraft gun. I don't know what size
Aircraft gun, yeah. Okay, so that's what I'm waiting for. You know, it's just, it's just stuff like this. We need to get it done, Rick. Come on, just do it. I measured it, it's, it's ready to go. I talked to a lot of people, let's do it. Put it next to the tank and what's, we're going to put that Legion part for our veterans.
Joey, I absolutely agree with you. We have major renovations coming to Romero Park. And we're looking at incorporating everything all at once. We're adding a pump track, we're adding new concrete, we're adding a number of different things, about $500,000 worth of additions to Romero Park. But we have to do it, you know, all together and we have to do it wisely with the money that we have. So yes, I agree, we should move the gun to someplace a little bit more appropriate. But, you know, we have to plan, we have $500,000 to improve the park. And unfortunately, you know, this is something that, you know, we, we just don't have the money right now to pick it up and move it. I mean, that's, it's set in concrete. It's bolted down. You know, I've gone over there and I've taken a look at it. It's not going to be an easy thing. And plus, there's going to be a lot of things done to the gun so it can be lowered.
You can't lower it because you'll crack it. If you lower it, you stick so
Well, there's, there's no way to, because
I measured it, I measured it.
There's hairlines
I measured it, it'll fit this three feet clearance. I measured it. You could put on a low boy and drive it over there, block the traffic and set it there. I'll paint it, okay? That's all I'm going to do for veterans, for, before I die. I want to do for our veterans that serve our country, okay? And just don't be stalling me. And then another one, I called you, I called the secretary
Okay, okay, let's
Okay, but to, to, meet me at the park, the same park. The deers are destroying those bricks that people bought. You go look at it and the benches are all rotted out. I would not let any veteran or people sit on those park benches. And you're supposed to meet me at the park and you always come up with something. So what it is, what is, I don't understand you. Open door policy. Just work with me. That's all I'm asking, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're moving on into the business items. Item 7A, deliberate enact on approval of July 8th, 2025, regular meeting minutes and the July 10th, 2025, special meeting minutes. Minutes were presented in your packet if you've had a chance to go over them, I hope you have. There are no additions or deletions. The minutes will stand approved as presented. Any corrections? Minutes stand approved, thank you. Item B, deliberate enact on event forms. First up, we have the Gate City Music Festival, August 30th through 31st, 2025. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a request for approval for event forms for three upcoming community events. The Gate City Music Festival is scheduled for August 30th through 31st, 2025. The First Baptist Church Block Party on August 20th, 2025. And the Billy the Kid Traveling Wake reenactment on August 9th, 2025. Each of these events have been submitted, have each submitted the required documentation and has been reviewed by staff for compliance with city regulations and event protocols. The city recommends that you approve these collectively.
All right. So we're going to do them collectively tonight. Any questions or comments or anybody would like to address any of the events? Come on, Brenda, don't shake your head.
I'm good.
Ms. Pafford?
It's been a long time people have been calling me Ms. Pafford. Retired for quite some time. So Mayor Sigada, Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley, Commissioner Schuster, Jacomo and Mr. Honeyfield and Mr. Mestes, Ms. Trujillo, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you about the First Baptist Church community, end of the summer, community block party. This event will be held on August 20th from 5:30 to 7:00 on the front lawn of the church, which, which is located at the corner of Rio Grande and 3rd Street. We're requesting the closure of Rio Grande Avenue from the intersection to the alleyway, which is located on the west side of the church. This particular closure will provide space for a water splash activity that is sponsored by the Colfax County Volunteer Firefighters. You have a map in your packet also. I'd also like to take this time to extend an invitation to the city of Raton and all surrounding areas to come and join us for this free, fun-filled, community gathering. Now, we'll not only have just the water splash game, we're going to have games for all ages from creating giant bubbles to cornhole. We'll also be serving free food. We have a very nutritious menu of hot dogs, chili dogs, nachos and also cotton candy, snow cone, popcorn and drinks. So the, for the city and the community plan on joining us, come to play, but also come to eat. We will have a, we'll be handing out free school supplies at this event for any child that is in pre-K through 6th grade. We did go to the school districts and asked, what are the supplies that need to be resupplied throughout the year? And the, the instructors have mentioned that they need disinfectant wipes, Kleenex and paper towels throughout the whole year. So we have put together backpacks that have all of those things in it. And bring your kids by, have them pick up a backpack with those school supplies. At this event, we'll also have our Iwana registration. And Iwana is an international, worldwide, nonprofit Christian ministry that we actually have at First Baptist Church. We focus on Bible-based lessons and discipleship. And at our church, we have clubs for children that are three years through 6th grade. And the only stipulation is if you come as a three-year-old, you have to be potty trained. But other than that, we have no stipulations. And we do, we'll start our Iwana program on September 3rd, the first Wednesday after Labor Day. We meet most Wednesdays from 6:00 to 7:30. We will have online registration available after August 1st. And you'll see the posters that will be all around town. And you just have to, to scan, I guess you would say, the QR code and that'll take you right to the online registration. If you don't want to do online registration, then come join us on August 20th from 5:30 to 7:00 at First Baptist Church. Come hungry, bring a towel. That's all you have to bring. So if you have any questions, I will try my best to answer them.
Any questions?
Well, thank you for your approval. We appreciate it.
Wonderful presentation, thank you.
Right, I'm not following.
Just tell us who the headliner is.
Jean Watson.
Thank you for allowing us, the Raton Museum and Shuler Restoration, to come before you the event that you are considering. We appreciate and the Billy the Kid Traveling Wake actually came about with a gentleman by the name of Buckeye Blake, who was commissioned by Fort Sumner Billy the Kid Museum to construct or build a bronze statue of Billy the Kid in repose. And so it'll be traveling the area for, it'll first be in Lamy, as I understand it, and then it'll come to Raton and then on to Scottsdale, Arizona, before it goes back to Fort Sumner for his final resting place. So we're excited to have that exhibit in the museum. Not only Buckeye Blake's artwork, but Tom Ross and Bob Boz Bell all will be presenting part of their artwork with the exhibit. And the reenactment, which is the city event that we're requesting approval for, is actually done by Main Street Live in Trinidad. And it'll, it includes, I believe, 11 actors. And it'll be a reenactment of Lincoln County, Colfax County War, which involves Billy the Kid. So following that, we'll all go to the museum, we'll have a reception there and have an opening for that, that exhibit. And then Shuler Restoration is working on several concerts that are in conjunction with this as well. So I'll let Carla
Okay.
Talk about that.
Well, this is in conjunction with the Raton Pass Film Festival that we're doing the Billy the Kid Traveling Wake. And it kicks off on Friday evening with Corinne Marie. And she is the lead guitarist in Michael Martin Murphy's Rio Grande Band. And she's absolutely wonderful. We heard her at the Shuler for the, the Christmas concert. She did a great job. But before that, what we're trying to do is maybe have a, a special gathering of a dinner for the parties involved. And we're, we're working on getting those details. We don't know if that is, is that 100%? Do we know yet, Mr. Sees? Anyway, but we will be extending invitations to the, to all of y'all as well. And then Saturday morning, as Kathy mentioned, we'll have the shootout and we'll have the talk from the artists. And then at 3 o'clock is Pat Garrett and Billy the Kid movie at the Shuler. And then Saturday evening is Kyms, what is, what is his, Royal Wade Kyms? I do not know him personally, but he has a great Yes, he has a, a great show that he does. I believe he did a duet with Garth Brooks.
Grand Ole Opry?
Yep, he's, he's got a nice, a nice reputation. So anyway, that, we think it's going to be fun and in conjunction with the Raton Pass Film Festival. We, we are trying to tie in our own local hero, Frank Stewart, you know, who is buried out in Faramont. Yeah, Faramont. And also Sister Blandina, as you know, is in Trinidad. Now Sister Blandina, as fact, myth, go
Lore.
She talked Billy the Kid out of murdering someone in Trinidad. So, so we've got two local kind of Billy the Kid heroes that ties, ties us in locally. So we'd like to do something like this, some kind of Billy the Kid events going forward. Really, we think that would be fun. If you've ever been to Deadwood, they've, they've made an entire industry out of Wild Bill who only visited three weeks. Yeah, he was killed there, but he only visited three weeks. Frank's been here, well, he'll be here forever.
Yeah. But we Again, thank you very much for your consideration. And as Ms. Pafford indicated, we invite all of you to please join us in the community to come out and enjoy a Billy the Kid weekend.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I can leave Joey who these three events. I'll second.
Motion to second to approve the events as listed. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item C, and I'm assuming we're going to do these collectively, so I'll read them this time. Deliberate enact on public celebration permits for Colfax Ale Cellar, Billy the Kid Traveling Wake, August 8th through 9th, 2025. And the Gate City Music Festival, August 30th through 31st, 2025. And then for the Left Turn Distillery, for the Gate City Music Festival, August 30th through 31st, 2025. Mr. Mestes?
Stole my thunder, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right.
Mayor and Commission, all permits have been reviewed and for regulatory compliance and the city recommends approval on all four.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the four public celebration permits.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate enact on quote from American Road Maintenance for fog seal application. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a quote from American Road Maintenance for the application of fog seal treatment to designated streets within Raton. The proposed maintenance work is part of the city's ongoing street preservation plan and it is budgeted in the current fiscal year to accept the quote from American Road Maintenance. This money is from New Mexico DOT co-op grant from last year. It will be used to fog seal streets that were chip sealed in 2023. It is based on state price agreement. The principles of this new firm are the same folks that have been doing chip seal and fog seal project in the city of Raton for the last decade. And with the project details, we're looking at 92,361 square yards and 133 tons. The city recommends proceeding with the quoted service to maintain street quality and extend pavement life.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments for Mr. Mestes? So I move out of my neighborhood and now they're going to fix it.
That's what we're waiting for, sir.
Thanks for moving it. All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the price quote for the fog seal application.
A motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate enact on amended contract between the city of Raton and Envision IT Solutions to provide managed IT services. Oh, I did? I did. I already crossed it off. I got it. All right, let's go back to E then. Deliberate enact on clean and beautiful grant program agreement between the city of Raton and the New Mexico Tourism Department. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is the grant agreement for the clean and beautiful program between the city of Raton and the New Mexico Tourism Department. This funding supports beautification and litter reduction initiatives throughout the city. Acceptance of this grant will provide important resources for public improvements and community engagement projects. This grant from the New Mexico Tourism Department is for $12,105. This is our second consecutive clean and beautiful grant. The grant has 25% math, which is either cash or in-kind services. The money will be used to purchase high-quality waste receptacles in city parks and to replace some along 1st and 2nd Street. Therefore, the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on Therefore, the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Questions or comments?
A question, is that 25% in-kind, are we planning to do it without cash, like services?
And waste receptacles that are going to be downtown, are they going to be secured so they're not rolling around on some of the streets today?
I believe they are. I think they're the heavy-duty sturdy ones.
I will move to approve the Clean and Beautiful Grant Program Agreement between the city of Rattone and New Mexico Tourism Department.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll try this one. Item F, deliberate an act on amended contract between the city of Rattone and Envision IT Solutions to provide managed IT services for Rattone Fire and EMS. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is an amended contract with Envision IT Solutions to extend managed IT services to Rattone Fire and EMS Department. This amendment ensures continuity and security of information systems across the departments and supports emergency services with modernized IT solution. Again, this is just an amendment, and staff recommends approval to support this.
Questions, comments? Yeah? It's an amendment.
This wasn't, sorry.
Go ahead.
Was this not part of the last go-round?
Yeah, but there was an error that we have to go back, and that's why we're amending it.
You'll recall that I sent you the spreadsheet after the meeting. So I did notice that they were charging us for three servers, and the fire department only has one server. So that will reduce the total amount of this annual contract. So that's what the correction is.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended contract between the city of Rattone and Envision IT Solutions to provide managed IT for Rattone Fire and EMS.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on recommendation of award for the Bisconte Building demolition project. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a recommendation of award for the demolition of the Bisconte Building to Kraken Creations Limited Liability Corporation for $193,274.44 plus tax totaling $209,235.62. Bids were solicited and reviewed in accordance with procurement policy on July 10th, 2025, and four bids were received. The recommended contractor has met all qualifications and requirements. Approval of this award will allow the city to move forward with necessary structural removal and site safety improvements. The city recommends your approval.
Questions, comments?
I have to say, this was the one thing I had on my agenda when I first ran for city commission is this building has been an eyesore since 1987. I will move to approve to award this bid for the Bisconte Building demolition project.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion?
I just was curious, is Kraken Construction, are they a local company or where are they out of? Do we know?
Albuquerque. Albuquerque.
Is this within the budget that we had set aside for this project? Yeah?
It did fall within, I believe there was a total of $400,000 that was proposed for the next fiscal year budget. It would come out of that, and it more than covers it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate an act on planning and zoning commission board appointments. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet are three applications for appointments to the planning and zoning board. The proposed candidates have expressed interest in serving and bring relevant experience to the role. The three names submitted are Jason Bennett, who's an incumbent, Alexis Dixon, who's an incumbent, and Jeremiah Trejo, who is a non-incumbent. These appointments are necessary to maintain a quorum, ensure continuity in planning activities and zoning reviews for the city, and the city recommends approval for all three candidates.
All righty, any comments or questions? I know Mr. Bennett is here. You want to say anything, Jason, or?
No.
Just hiding, hiding in the shadows? Okay. And Mr. Trejo is standing over here as well.
I would just like the opportunity, think it's a good first step, to be able to give back to the community, and I'm excited if I get voted in.
Thanks for the application. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the three candidates for the planning and zoning commission board appointments.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate an act on Resolution 2025-44, approval of the fiscal year 2025 end-of-year financial reports for city of Rattone, Rattone Water Works and Rattone Public Service. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor and Commission, I yield to city chief of staff and treasurer, Ms. Michael Ann Antinucci.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. So in your packet this evening, we do have our end-of-fiscal-year report. And we'll see that we ended the fiscal year with an ending cash balance of $5,215,797.99, less the 1/12 reserve and also the $1 million CD that will mature in January of 2026. That leaves you available cash in the general fund of $3,584,266.57. I've detailed for you all of the ending cash balances and all of the remaining funds. Also for June, the gross receipts that we did receive was just slightly above our general fund projection for the year. So we ended the year just 0.56% above our budget projection. This distribution represents the April business activity. There were several outstanding grant reimbursements at the end of the year. We'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about the budget. But we did have the animal shelter, some airport projects, our Quality of Life Grant, Brownfield Grant, and the Juvenile Justice Grant. As a result, I have to do temporary transfers to cover those expenses until the grant reimbursements come in, and some of them are already trickling in now. Overall, Rattone exceeded $3.5 million in capital expenditures in FY '25, funded by various state and federal grants, also New Mexico Finance Authority and Environment Department financing, mainly the sanitation truck. That was a combination loan grant, and then the city contributed funds out of our sanitation fund. The capital expenditures included street improvements, purchase of the new sanitation truck, also an airport mower, modernization of convention center elevator, depot architectural design, portion of the Bartlett Mesa acquisition, that was a legislative capital outlay that we received, Kearney School architectural design, Ballfield complex improvements, airport projects, Brownfield Professional Services, the Semirons system pump upgrades, and various facility improvements. The city of Rattone has successfully expanded, or not expanded, expended the law enforcement recruitment grant funds that were allocated. We also received the fire recruitment grant funds and did have a small reversion at the end of the year, $5,141.25. This year, the LE RF, we will receive 25%. So we'll be in the third year of that grant. And then the fire funds will actually receive 75% for year two. The FY '25 end-of-year reports, the budget adjustments, and our FY '26 budget will all be submitted to DFA by the July 31 deadline. I also put in your packet our lodgers tax comparison report. And we actually did pretty good overall this year with lodgers tax. You'll recall last year, we had about almost a $40,000 shortfall. But this year, we came close to reaching our goal of $500,000 in lodgers tax revenues. So I was pretty pleased about that. I think we have some great events coming up, and hopefully that will put some heads in beds. Gas tax, you know, we've struggled with that for the last couple of years. The June distribution wasn't really any better than previous months. I will say that today I got the July distribution, and it was a little over $20,000. So hopefully, over the next few months, maybe the gas tax will turn around. And then the cannabis excise tax, we ended the fiscal year with $42,652.63. Those funds are tracked separately in the special revenue fund, but at the end of the fiscal year, we just transfer them into the general fund for operating expenses. Other than that, you know, we were just working real hard to try to close out as many grants as we could. There were a few that were expiring as of June 30, so we focused really hard to get those closed out and get the grant reimbursements submitted. So just part of closing out the fiscal year, starting a new fiscal year. The temporary transfers that I talked about, that's something that we have to rebudget in the FY '26 budget as a repayment back to the general fund. So as those grant reimbursements come in, I'll make sure that we're putting the funds back in the general fund. Stand for any questions?
Any questions?
So this, sorry, does this, this includes, do you have the reports with it as well?
Oh, so we do have in your packet the Rattone Water Works and the Rattone Public Service end-of-year reports as well.
I will move to approve Resolution 2025-44, approval of FY '25 end-of-year financial reports from the city of Rattone, Rattone Water Works, and Rattone Public Service.
Motion and a second to approve and adopt Resolution 2025-44. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate an act on Resolution 2025-45, fiscal year 25 end-of-year budget adjustments. I'm going to go to Michael Ann, since she's standing there. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet, we do bring to you this evening our end-of-year budget adjustment. Similar to previous years, we just kind of are doing some housekeeping, going through line by line, making sure that we're just kind of reallocating funds amongst the various line items. You'll see on the second page some of those transfers that I talked about for the animal shelter, juvenile justice, and the historic buildings. But other than that, like I said, just really moving funds around. One thing I might mention in our financial report on the second page. So our general fund revenues, we actually ended the year at about 97%. And then our expenditures, we were actually well under budget at an overall 81.19%. So, you know, there's a lot of funds within the budget that didn't get expended. So a lot of that you'll see in the FY '26 budget, just kind of carrying over. So hopefully, we can accomplish some of those goals in the new fiscal year.
Questions or comments?
I'll make motion to adopt Resolution 2025-45, fiscal year 25 end-of-year budget adjustments. A second.
Motion and second to adopt Resolution 2025-45. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate an act on Resolution 2025-46, the 2025-2026 municipal budget adoption for the 114th fiscal year. Mr. Mestas, do you want to say anything before I, Michael Ann, or?
Yield to our chief of staff.
Just thought I'd give you a shot.
Mayor and Commission, we've been working on the budget for the last several months. We did get interim approval by DFA, and so we're currently operating on the interim budget. But we do bring to you this evening the final FY '26 budget. As you know, it's kind of a living document. We try to get it as accurate as possible. Most of what I've tried to incorporate are a lot of the grants that we're administering. So what I really focused on the last couple of weeks was just trying to close out the fiscal year, try and figure out what the grant balances are, what needs to carry over. If there were funds that we technically borrowed from the general fund, trying to pay those funds back. So a lot of times with a lot of these projects, the general fund is kind of cash-flowing the projects until we can get reimbursed from the various grants. So a lot of money movement going on. But you'll see the first page in your budget, and I'll probably just highlight the first four or five pages. The rest of it is the actual line item details. So I've prepared it so that you can easily slip it into your budget binder that we provided for the interim budget. You'll see kind of a detail, a summary of the changes that we made from the interim to the final. We did receive a residual payment from Rattone Water Works. That was $24,260. So that was some additional revenue that we've added to the budget. Other than that, just, I kind of recalculated things based on the actual GRT at the end of the year. Let's see. You can see where I reduced the airport consumables by the amount that was reimbursed. So I just kind of tried to go through and clean a lot of that up. I did have to make some adjustments to the salary schedules. We talked about this at our workshop. There is a 0.5% increase in the PERA. This will be the last year. It was phased in over four years. Not to say that they won't continue to look at that, and there might be future increases. We also were faced with a 20% increase in the health insurance, so we factored that in as well. The one thing that I, I did do, just based on some of our discussions, I've detailed out on the bottom the projects that we've discussed that we're going to dip into the reserves throughout the course of the fiscal year to accomplish some of these items. A lot of them are building improvements. We've talked about the city hall foundation repairs, the need for the HVAC units at the education building. We also have some matching funds for the airport. One of the more recent ones that we was, we were awarded was the $1.1 million for the depot project. And so that one comes with a $275,000 match. So I did go ahead and split the match, half coming out of the general fund and half coming out of the Economic Development Fund. So you'll see that in there, as well as we have some parks improvements that carried over from FY '25. Also, the purchase of the new ambulance is carrying over. One of the things that we were kind of blindsided with was the need for new tough books in the police department. the police department. Evidently, Windows 10 will no longer be supported come October, so these particular computers are not compatible with Windows 11. So the chief did get a quote that included the tough books, the mounting brackets, installation, kind of the complete package, and it came in at about $106,000. So we'll probably be coming back to you at a future commission meeting. This particular vendor is on a state price agreement, so we would bring that back to you for approval prior to any purchase. And then, of course, we talked a little bit about the abatement expenses. We left the $400,000 in there, but what I did take out to kind of allow us to be able to cover the match and the computers was the Schuler money. And that's just because we've talked about seeking additional grant funds for that project. So hopefully, we're successful and we won't have to dip into general fund reserves for that project. So just wanted to give you a brief overview of that. Other than that, you know, we talked about at our, I don't know if you want to call it a town hall or what we had last night. But we talked a lot about the projects and the grants. And I think even for those of us that work here, you know, we're always amazed at how much we're managing with, you know, small staff, very few resources. But, you know, we'll continue to seek more grant funding as grants are closed out. You know, we always kind of want to continually have other grants in the pipeline, but we're currently managing about $18 million in grants. So you'll see in our recap for the overall budget, our general fund operating budget's about $7.6 million, but our FY26 total budget with all funds is a little over $33 million. So that's pretty amazing for a town of our size.
Come a long way since I started here.
Yeah, yeah. So just kind of wanted to point that out. I went ahead and updated the graphs and some of the charts to reflect the new figures in the budget. So what we're proposing is that we would dip into reserves for one-time capital expenditures in the amount of $1,486,560. So it's slightly less than what we had discussed during the interim budget process. But as you know, things come up during the year and so we may have to consider things as they come up, but a lot of it is building improvements and some of that we just can't plan for. I did put in there, also based on our discussions, I don't know if it's in my chart here, but I did include some monies for the hood system at the senior center. So I think I just put like $100,000 in there. We currently have a contract with a mechanical engineer and I think we, I don't even know that we had paid them come end of fiscal year. So I just rebudgeted the amount of their contract plus made it an even $100,000 so that hopefully, we can address that. I mean, we would still like to seek possibly emergency funding for aging and long-term services. I also included in your budget, the schedule for property tax so that you can kind of see how we arrive at that figure based on the new levies for residential and non-residential properties. And also, you should have a copy of the debt, debt schedule as well. So I think the city, including the utilities, I know that water is constantly monitoring their debt. They have a couple through the USDA program that hopefully, I would say in the next four to five years, we might be able to pay off at least one of those. And then the city, you know, we can kind of look at some of the other loans that we have as well. So I just put that in there so that you can kind of take a look at all of the debt that we have. We have some N E D through the RIB program, USDA and New Mexico Finance Authority. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments? Great job as usual.
So once again, it's due to the state by July 31. Any changes after that would have to be done through a budget adjustment, but we can't start making budget adjustments until we get the final approval from DFA, which is usually around September 1st.
Any other comments, questions? Entertained a motion.
I will move to approve Resolution 2025-46, 2025 through 2026 municipal budget adoption 114th fiscal year.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 202546. Is there any further discussion? Ezra, we ought to probably do this roll call, this one.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo? And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item L, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, bottom line up front, today we had the official groundbreaking ceremony in Raton, New Mexico for Rizound. This event marks the beginning of their commitment to bringing both high-speed fiber internet and meaningful community connections to the citizens. As I stated earlier today, you know, my big three goals coming into town were workforce, housing, broadband, and it looks like we can pretty soon put the broadband to bed. Mentions and dispatches, I'd like to shout out to Cynthia Molina, Ann Tice, Jose Lopez and Chapo the Wonder Dog for their work on putting together the core mixer last night. The treasurer is hoping to come up for air now that she's been getting all of our finances in order. Actually, a shout out to her too. Public Works crews have been busy removing old batting cages from the Little League field complex. They are preparing for the construction of six new building, six new batting cages that were purchased with monies from the Quality of Life Grant. With Police Chief Garcia has been busy with the modernization of police equipment and unfortunately, there's a lot of money to be spent with that. Chief Burke is taking over as primary city training officer and is scheduling sexual harassment prevention, workforce bullying and violence training for all city staff in August. Engineering advances two major airport projects by pushing for a resolution of contract and bonding issues, prompting commitment to a start date after a two-month delay. He also facilitated year-end financial closeouts to meet critical reporting deadlines and analyzed survey data to quantify earthworks for erosion mitigation on the main runway, safety area in response to FAA compliance requirements. Facilities, Leonard helped with the senior center for the preparation of Rizound networks. Thank you to Leonard. The clerk and chief of staff participated in IPR training last week in an economic development. Cynthia Molina and Ann Tice had completed a week-long International Economic Development Council program in Silver City, New Mexico to bring them up on the latest economic development methods. And finally, in my closing thoughts, I'd like to quote a few lyrics that sometimes describe how I feel. "I'm crazy, but that's not how it goes. Millions of people living as foes. Maybe it's not too late to learn how to love and forget how to hate. I've listened to preachers, I've listened to fools, I've watched all the dropouts who make all the rules. One person conditioned to rule and control, the media sells it and you live by the rule. I'm going off the rails of a crazy train." Rest in peace, Ozzy Osbourne, who died earlier today. And by the way, for believe it or not, he was a practicing member of the Church of England. That's all I have.
Alrighty. There is no other business items to come before this. Commission, Commissioner Honeyfield, do you have any final thoughts?
None.
Commissioner Giacomo? Commissioner Schuster?
I'll just introduce our visiting grandson here to.
Oh, nice.
Suter, who came to visit from Phoenix.
Nice.
So he's flown off of it.
Welcome. Mayor Protim? And I have nothing. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.